All right. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a council work session update from the office of the mayor on various subjects and teams. So I'll turn it over to the mayor and deputy mayor and maybe kick us off and then we'll have a presentation and ask questions.
Yeah, let me, um, I, I, I'll be brief. I'm going to get off. We got the deputy mayor on, he'll, he'll, he'll quarterback and have folks give their little background in their offices. We weren't totally sure on, on what it is you wanted to know. So we'll do, do questions as you, as you see fit. I, I'll just say that the project management office is something that we have built out. As you see, Harriet Fisher's on here, someone who we just appointed as director. She's the new director of their office of project management. And then you see John Brock here as well as Kaylee Exton. And I hope that you spend a lot of time asking them questions. I want people to understand, you know, a lot of what people don't realize is they think, I, I tell people, uh, people think working in government or being mayor is, is, um, is, uh, is glamour. I tell people it's, um, one percent glamour, 99% work. And a lot of the work, um, that, that happens, um, in, in city government takes place out of the mayor's office with, with, with the constituent service piece. Um, so they, I'm hoping so they can give you a flavor of, um, a lot of the calls that we get, a lot of the things that, um, a lot of people never even hear about that we have to take care of. Um, so we have three one one, Kaylee, for example, worked in three one one. So we kind of have a three one one person in the mayor's office to deal with the myriad of calls and issues that we get with. I tell people all the time, if you're coming into government and you're coming to be on TV and, and making, and, and just to be seen, that's about five percent of the work, 99, 95% of it is what, what goes on in the mayor's office. So, um, hopefully John and Kaylee can give you a flavor for the hundreds of calls that we get as it relates to constituent services, which is the number one job we see um, as, um, as, as government employees to, to solve people's problems. And they solve people's problems. Um, from, you know, garbage tote might be misplaced to someone who might call in because they have a problem with their um, animal. They have a request from the mayor. They want the mayor to come to an event or, um, they want the mayor to come mediated dispute. But really it's, it's, it's a way to be able to work with the rest of the city and, and get them back to um, a department that's able to assist their, their needs. And then talk Tim Ware from, um, OPI. Um, and hopefully he can give clarification on what exactly OPI does because there's a lot of misconceptions out there. People think, um, OPI has all this investigative power and all this stuff. They need to read the charter. And Tim can give, um, brief update on that. I would say that you only have an hour. So if there is a need for, um, follow up on, on all this stuff, we'd be more than willing to do individual things on this. I mean, PMO alone could take a whole hour. Um, so I mean, you've got PMO, you got OPI and you got constituent services, which is topic all, all in and of itself and, and all that they're able to do. So I'm going to turn it over to the deputy mayor who will introduce the various, um, areas that we have here and then, um, um, take it from there. The thing I'll say is we have mission, vision, values. One of ours is citizen priority. And the constituent service is part of that citizen priority piece. So, um, it's critical um, that you have good, good constituent services. That's where Mayor and the block falls under. Um, council president was just with me. We just, uh, council, council member Harris was with, has been with me on those as had council member PO. So I think, um, the, the three council members that are on the car are very familiar with that part of the job. Um, and it's, and it's really the, the, the most important job, part of the job as far as I'm concerned is, um, constituent services along with other things. So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll turn it over to you to kind of go through, um, and introduce the departments and then, and then kind of take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think we'll go in the order in which they're listed. And since the mayor was talking about constituent services, we'll start with, with that group, with John Brock, uh, but because of time, let's try to keep our, you know, if you're going to do a presentation, keep that to maybe 10 minutes and leave it five or 10 minutes for questions and answers. So, John, you want to take over?
Sure. Um, so yeah, I'll just kind of give an overview and then, um, you know, take any questions. Uh, is, is the mayor alluded to a little bit. Um, we, we really take in, uh, everything under the sun in city government. Uh, I see the, uh, former mayor nodding there. I'm sure he knows. Uh, we get, uh, we get a number of, uh, we get probably about, uh, 20 to 30 calls in an average day, um, to our, our mayoral line, uh, seven zero four five. Um, you really never know what you're going to get. Uh, sometimes it's someone who's been trying to address someone, something with three one one and hasn't, hasn't gotten the resolution they're working for, uh, looking for. Um, either because of a, you know, shortcoming on, on our end or, um, maybe they didn't get the, the resolution for a good reason. And they're just trying to kick it upstairs. Um, we have received, uh, well, we, we have 4,000 substantive emails, um, to the info at City of Rochester inbox. Um, so far this year, um, we also get a large number of what I would say are not substantive or like, you know, mass emails, um, that we kind of have to filter through each day. And then with all these things, um, a lot of times we, we, we carry it over to our, our individual emails. So, or communications. So, um, if I re, if I get started on a case about a property, let's say, and, you know, uh, side of a building's falling down or something, um, there's a good chance I'll respond from John Brock at City of Rochester and not info. And so then things kind of carry over that way. Um, so substantially larger amount of communications. Um, at any given time, we probably have, I don't know, I would say about 40 cases going on with departments. So we kind of, some things stay within the mayor's office. For example, if it's a scheduling request or that, um, you know, we handle that. Um, but many of the things engage one or more departments. Uh, we try to sort of do warm handoffs. Sometimes we stay pretty involved. Uh, sometimes it actually involves more than one department. And, um, part of my job is coordinating between departments to solve people's problems in addition to just sort of doing the, um, intake aspects. Um, and then the, the emails and phone calls are certainly the main, um, sources of constituent contacts, but we also do have some that come to us through the mayor himself, like someone has emailed him directly, someone talks to him at an event, um, you know, he takes a note or so on and, and passes that on to us. And then we pick up with the person. Um, we do get a small number of, of in-person visitors to city hall, um, who, who usually check in at one of the security desks. And if, uh, one of us is available, we'll go downstairs. Uh, we also have our two fellows right now who do a great job, um, working with the public. Um, so sometimes one of them will join us or one of them will be the first point of contact. Um, and, uh, and then even, you know, I spent a decent amount of time, um, at events and that. Sometimes people come up to me. So there's, there's various channels that, that we get, um, uh, constituent cases sort of initiated through. Um, and yeah, when it comes to topics, I mean, it's, uh, we get quite a bit of, of proper property related matters, um, whether it's, um, you know, like conditions at a property, sometimes a neighbor, um, who's just not happy with the behavior of someone in a property. Um, we get a lot of things related to really, really bad behavior of other people. Um, and sometimes, you know, things like ATVs and dirt bikes, for example, um, noise complaints. Uh, sometimes really disputes that should just never, uh, come to our level. Uh, I got a person who was irate that his neighbor, uh, hangs her carpet to dry, her rug to dry over their shared fence. Um, called the RPD, called nine one one twice wanting RPD to come force her to take the carpet down. And when that didn't work out, called us. Uh, I know many people have heard, uh, about the, um, the cat shaving request we got, who we actually did, I think might've been able to help by, by putting her in touch with, uh, uh, charities to help people with, uh, animal care. Um, I've had people who want us to seize their neighbor's house. Um, so we had, you know, a little, um, had to, had to Google the, uh, some constitution, some bill of rights, uh, amendments on that one. Um, and as far as we really, we have a mix, I mean, DES, um, yeah, especially during like plowing season, uh, is a big topic. Um, and, uh, various MBD related things, um, including sometimes working through the system, like people want, people want help navigating, um, things like zoning or what kind of permit is this? Is this a permit that goes to the neighborhood service center? Is this a permit where you walk into the permit office? Um, and so, yeah, we try to, we try to kind of help, not even just point people in the right direction. We do that, but also make sure that, that we stay involved long enough, um, once it's in the department's hands that, um, you know, the customer gets, uh, taken care of and that, and that we're aware of it. Uh, we get, we get requests related to recreation. Um, those are usually fairly straightforward, like I want to reserve this facility or, um, you know, how do I, what kinds of programs exist for kids during the summer or things like that, or when will various, uh, pools or spray parks be open? Um, so yeah, that's pretty much, that's pretty much what we do. Some of the cases, we do, we do have a lot. There, there's a relatively small number of cases that are, um, you know, simple. Um, we do get a lot of complex situations. Um, some people just come here as their starting point, but most of the time, um, if they came to the mayor's office, it is, it is because they're dealing with a situation that, uh, wasn't easy to resolve. Um, you know, through three one one or, or didn't even make sense to start at three one one. Um, so yeah, we have, we generally have a, a large number of, of ongoing issues. Um, I'm immediately going to a Zoom with, uh, council member after this for a, a local issue that's challenging. Um, so I think that's about all I have for now. Uh, Kaylee, did you want to add anything before we take questions?
Sorry about that. Hi. Um, I think part of it too is, um, the info@cityrochester.gov. Uh, some people will see that email right on the main site. Um, right next to the three one one number. So I think that's why the number of like the variety of calls or the variety of emails really that we get is, is so wide. Um, because yes, there's some, uh, some emails are directed to mayor's office, Mayor Malik, um, asking for that, you know, escalation, I need help. Um, and then there's other times where it is general questions. Um, so I think it's, that's kind of why we have that, that range of, of emails that we are replying to that way.
We also get a decent number of, um, things, people who, who want to vent about something. Um, or, you know, just, just really make their feelings heard. Um, a lot of, a lot of folks want to talk to the mayor, um, as soon as they call. Um, usually we're able to help them. Uh, since, you know, as I'm sure everyone's aware, the mayor's has a pretty full schedule. Um, so yeah, with that, um, questions?
Yeah. So I'll lead off and then I'll open it up to other council members. Just one question about how you're, um, tracking or logging, uh, these long-term complaints that consistently come up. Is that, is that something that you just triage to other departments like NBD or DES or whatever? Or do you keep some kind of record in the mayor's office as well?
Um, so yeah, I have a spreadsheet. Uh, I mean, it's basically my to-do list, but it also doubles the, many of, many of the things on there originated with constituent, uh, calls or emails. Um, so we also have a way that we manage our, um, outlook that sort of color codes and or flags certain ones that require additional follow-up.
But the reason I ask that specific question is I'm, I'm certain that council members are getting similar calls. And just wonder if down the road, we might think about, is there a way for us to, to jointly, uh, manage complaints that come in from constituents so that, you know, we're not all doing triple work, um, the same issue or just a matter of how we might communicate when something's going on.
Yeah, that's a great point. I mean, even just within the administration, um, there will be people who, who go to the senior management team page and kind of email everyone. Um, so I, Kaylee and I basically, for, for the most part, now it's very department specific or that sometimes it'll be, you know, it's the address to the police chief and will be copied and then, and it's about police and then we'll let him take the lead on it. But if, if somebody, um, sort of blankets, uh, all or many of the senior management team and it's a general inquiry, I'll usually try to be the person who takes the lead on it because it's sort of most in my responsibility. Um, the, the part of the, you don't always know when people do that because they don't, they don't always put everyone on the same email. In fact, they usually don't. They often send like a dozen people the same email, but separately. Um, so then sometimes I'll get forwarded ones from others, um, like deputy mayor or Tammy, um, saying, hey, did you get this? Uh, and usually I did as well. Um, so we do try to communicate that way to avoid duplication of effort. Or sometimes I can even tell from the way that the message is phrased that they probably sent it to several of us. And I'll, I'll check around and be like, don't worry about this. We're on it. Um, yeah, as far as council members, um, I mean, yeah, feel free to ask us if you think that we also got, got the same email. It's, it's, it's not always easy to tell. I mean, sometimes I've certainly been emailed by constituent where they also email a council member or they'll email several council members and the mayor. And then, yeah, I'll get looped in.
So any additional questions from council members?
I guess just another way of asking your question, President Melendez, is, isn't just about how we can know where conversations are happening with the administration, but also, um, when it's appropriate for us to be tapping into John and his team. I mean, certainly if a constituent calls me and asks about, uh, you know, garbage pickup at this point, uh, you know, I certainly have the tools to be able to address a problem like that. The conversation John and I are having later today uh, is a much more complicated and kind of complex, uh, situation that a, a couple of neighbors have, have, uh, have looked me into. But I don't think we're going to answer this now. I, I do think as this office gets built up, the general, uh, chore and, and, and task before us is how we figure out how to make sure we're not duplicating efforts. The council members aren't all spinning their wheels to try to solve problems and that you are able to, you John are able to tap into council members in the, for the places that we can help. And I don't know that we have that down to a science yet, but I'd like to work on it together.
Yeah. And I, I just want to reiterate, I think the first stop for anybody is still three one one. Three one one is still the number one stop because that's where we get data from. That's where we're able to see what things are happening. So I want to encourage everybody to, to, to use three one one. Um, if it's something that can't be done, then obviously we want it to be escalated to John. I mean, and it's easier to get it escalated to John because, because what's going to happen is, is that it's going to be very difficult for most council members to solve these problems on their own. I mean, they, they don't direct, um, you know, DES or any of the other people. So, um, so, so utilizing John, I think earlier rather than later, um, is very, I hope is, is, is easier because then he then can, um, quarterback it to the department that it needs to be going to. Um, so that's, that, that's really what I recommend for folks. But we want to make sure that we really, we, we spent a lot of money on three one one. So that's really the first stop. And then for these more complex issues, obviously, um, that's where, that's where John, um, will, John and folks will, will, will step up and, and, and step up to make sure that we, we're putting people on the right, uh, on the right path to getting their questions answered.
Thank you. I think for the sake of time, maybe we should move on to the next, if that's all right with everybody.
Sounds good.
Um, so next is the, uh, is OMB, I'm sorry, PMO, um, and, uh, uh, Harry, do you want to put the screen up?
I need to be made a co-host. I'm not sure who the host is.
You should be all set now.
Okay. Okay.
We have like a 10 minute presentation for, for PMO and then, uh, and then five or 10 minutes question to answer. So, so I'll, I'll get the ball started. Uh, we, the theme we have is the PMO. Then what have we done now? What are we doing? And finally, where are we going? Next slide, please. Uh, the, of course you know me, Harriet Fisher's is the director of project management, new director. Uh, she, uh, had applied for the CTO position and that's how I got to know her. And when Bill accepted it, um, uh, we, um, uh, I knew she would had, she had capabilities to take over this department. And fortunately she, she agreed to it. Uh, and lastly, Colin Connor is on the line. He's one of our senior project managers. Uh, and he, I've been on multiple projects with him. He's, he's an excellent, excellent person to work with. So when I took over, I didn't know PMO reported to me. That was a surprise, a new surprise for this position. Uh, but, uh, the first order of business was to look at the structure and evaluate the personnel. And when I saw the structure that, that the director was a temporary employee who lived in Texas, I said, that's not a good structure. And one of the project managers lived in the Philippines and I viewed that as a, as a security issue. So we had to terminate the contract labor appointments. Uh, and then I immediately initiated the search for a new director. Obviously we ended up with, we ended up very happily ended up with, uh, Harriet and, uh, she got promoted to her current position. And with that, let me turn it over to Colin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, council members for having us here today. Uh, as one of the project managers who's been with the project management office since our inception, I just wanted to take a little while to talk about, uh, some of the background of the project management office and where we've come from. Uh, so since our inception, uh, we've completed over 15 projects in the technology space across eight different city departments. Uh, and many of these have been, uh, highly successful, including our online marriage and domestic partnership licenses, payroll process improvements and automations, uh, the launch of trade licensing and our new in-for platform, which is the first phase of our land management project, as well as the launch of a new foil records access system. Uh, that is to say, you know, we have had some challenges over our time, uh, with the city that have limited our ability to establish stability and consistency in the products that we deliver. Uh, and the first and foremost there is our lack of, uh, consistency in our leadership. We've had four different directors, uh, or leaders of the project management office since we were first instituted. And that's just made it a, a real challenge to uh, establish a solid, consistent methodology, uh, for all of our project managers to follow. And it's made it hard for us to institute best practices across all of the projects in our portfolio. Uh, additionally, what, you know, over that time, we've struggled with a, a fairly drastic loss in our resources. Uh, at the current time, we're down to only three project managers, uh, with the city managing all of our projects. Uh, and in addition to that, the lack of resources has required us to fill multiple roles on these projects where we're acting as both traditional project managers and as business analysts, uh, which are very different, uh, responsibilities on a project. Uh, so just to kind of recap that very quickly or, or explain that a little bit. Uh, as a project manager, we're responsible for the overall implementation, uh, of these projects. We're managing the scope, the schedule, the staffing and the budget for these projects and making sure we're keeping everything on track. Uh, whereas a business analyst is more focused on, uh, capturing information about the requirements and processes of our city departments. Uh, they'll act as a translator between IT and the business unit that we're working with. Uh, and they help really ensure that the solution, uh, the end result meets the needs of the city. Uh, these roles really are both necessary to complete our project successfully. And to this point, we haven't had the structure in place to have separate people, uh, acting on a single project, uh, in those roles. Uh, so at this point, I'm just going to hand things over to our director, Harriet, uh, to share a little bit more about where we are as a department now and where we're hoping to go next.
Thank you, Colin. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having us today. So again, my name is Harriet Fisher and I am the director of the project management office. I previously spent 24 years in the IT department. And so to the, um, deputy mayor's point, I applied for the CTO position. When Bill decided to stay in that role, I was offered the director position and I happily accepted. So today I'm going to talk to you about what the PMO is doing right now and what our plans are for the future. So as you can see from our org chart, the PMO currently reports to the deputy mayor. Now, I know there's been some talk about us possibly moving to the IT department, but the mayor has decided to keep us in the mayor's office. So by staying in the mayor's office, we will be better aligned to help support the administration's strategic goals. We'll be better positioned to gain that top level buy-in from senior management, which is crucial to our success. And it will allow us to grow into an enterprise PMO. So currently we're managing IT projects, but we plan to service all city departments in the future. So right now we have three project managers, Kyle and Mike and Wendy, and they are all doing a fabulous job. And we have two vacancies and I plan to fill those vacancies in the very near future with business analysts to resource our projects with the appropriate skillset to Colin's point on the previous slide. So what are we doing now in the PMO, our current projects? We are very busy in the project management office. We are currently managing almost 20 projects. Our top priority right now is our mainframe replacement program. So this is a program, which is a collection of four projects. It's going to replace the remainder of our mainframe applications and business critical Microsoft access applications, which by the way, will lose support from Microsoft next year. So at the completion of this program, we will be off the mainframe. So I will say that again, at the completion of this program, we will be off the mainframe. We will no longer be reliant on any outdated technology as far as Microsoft Access and mainframe services go. We are continuing to lead the land management project. So conveyor certifications will go live in the system on August 22nd. And we are currently working on configuration and data migration for phase three, which will include the remaining permits issued by MBD. That's all expected to go live, uh, October this year. Working on our website replacement with, with many input from many of you. So that's in the beginning stages and I'm told we are targeting a go-live of fall of next year for that. Working with RPD to replace their warrants and booking system. So that's a joint project with RPD, Monroe County and New York State. And in addition to that, we are also replacing RPD's body worn cameras and digital evidence management system. So that project will replace old cameras, new cameras and consolidate all digital evidence into one system. So we've already selected a vendor for that. We'll be submitting that contract to council for approval in August with hopes of kicking off implementation in September. We are replacing our online property information system. So that's a very popular system used by many in the community. So we facilitated community sessions to get feedback from them on what they want out of this system. And we listen to them and we will be publishing many of their requirements in an RFP within the next few weeks. And we're working on a timekeeping scheduling system upgrade. So that's a citywide project, which will bring about improvements to our payroll processes, including improvements to our, our PD overtime reporting. So in addition to all those projects, we're also providing project management resources to 10 other small, medium-sized technology projects. So we are very busy in the project management office. Definitely enough work to keep us busy for a while. Future PMO 2022 and beyond. So how are we planning to ensure the success of the PMO? I broke this up into four phases over this current fiscal year. Phase one is our current state analysis. So we've completed four of those five goals already. And now the focus is on our stakeholder analysis. So I'll be meeting with our customers, which are other city departments to hear from them. I want to know, are we meeting their expectations? Do we even have the right stakeholders on these projects? Feedback is really important to me. I need to hear from our customers to make sure we're meeting their expectations and providing a valuable service to them. Phase two will be our redesign phase. So top priorities in this phase are staff development and creation of a service catalog. So it's in my experience, I've learned that my staff is happier and more productive when they feel included, valued and supported. So to that point, the PMO will provide funding for each member to join the Rochester chapter of the National Project Management Institute. We'll get access to tools, templates, seminars, training. We'll be able to network with other PMs in the greater Rochester area. Um, so really focusing on that staff development. Other priority in this phase is creation of our service catalog. We are a service organization. All service organizations should have a catalog of their offerings, should answer the question, what can you do for me? It's not feasible that the PMO is going to manage all the projects in the city of Rochester, but we can offer more than just project management. Services such as facilitating process improvement sessions, strategic planning, project planning, auditing, project management, training, tools, templates, variety of other project management training, tools, templates, variety of other services to ensure that our customers are getting what they need to be successful in regards to project management. Phase three is the implementation phase. We'll deploy that service catalog, roll out the other items from phase two, and begin participating in strategic planning sessions with the senior management team. We need to be at the table to ensure we are providing services that allow us all to be successful. Phase four, continuous improvement. So we're going to solicit feedback. We're going to listen to that feedback and revise our design and processes as necessary. And through all four phases, we will communicate and facilitate change management across the city. And that's the Project Management Office. Then now in future, you all have any questions?
So one quick question to follow up after the work session here. Could you send us a full list of all projects, or even those small and medium, just so we have a sense of what else is being worked on?
Absolutely.
Any questions from Council members, additional questions?
I have one.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, President Melendez. This is very good to hear. I'm excited to hear about the PMO, the PMO and all the new things that you're planning to do. It's very lengthy list. Is there plans to hire additional project managers, or will you be able to manage with the current levels that you have in addition to the to the newly appointed analyst?
Yes, so the plan right now is to continue functioning with the three project managers in addition to two business analysts. And so the approach we're taking, while we do want to expand out to become an enterprise PMO, like I mentioned in one of the previous slides, we it's not feasible to say we're going to manage all the projects in the city of Rochester. And so keeping that in mind, we if we're we want to focus on our enterprise-level strategic projects. So our project managers will be reserved for managing those level of projects. Any other smaller initiatives in the city or other projects that are not in line with the overall strategic goals, those projects will be managed by individual departments, but we will provide resources to them. So we will help them. Like if we if they need help planning their projects, we will help come in and help put together a schedule. If they need help selecting vendors for technology projects, we will come in and help with that phase. And so we'll give provide project management training. So those are all some of the services that I hope to have included in our service catalog, so that for those projects that we it's just not feasible for us anywhere. Small teams, and this is a big city. And so for those projects that we can't personally manage, we want to still, we don't want to slow progress, right? So we want to still give them the tools they need to manage their projects. So right now, we'll see how we do with the three. And then if if it's getting to be too much, then I'll put in a request for some more.
Yeah, if I could add something, the the budget cycle is over, so we have what we have in the budget. But I suspect that after a year from now, any year from now, I should say, with the leadership of Harriet and the leadership as project manager of Colin, I think we'll we'll prove the value of this organization to a much greater extent to the other departments in the city. And I think it will warrant having more individuals in the department going forward.
I love I really like that you mentioned about training other departments, you know, project management strategies that will probably help take some of the load off and also keep you efficient. So I really like that idea, and kudos to that.
Harriet, could you turn that off the slide so we can see everybody?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions?
I just want to thank Harriet for the clarity on when we'll be off the mainframe. I love I love the repetition there because it's so critically important. And I do genuinely think that it's 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 one of those things that I'm not, I would imagine that a fraction of the people in this community have an understanding of how significant of a project that is, and only because it's very, very technical and very specific. But kudos to for prioritizing it. And Harriet, I would just ask that you keep us posted on some progress as as you go. I think it's really important for Council just to have, you know, the once-in-awhile quarterly progress reports on what is happening, or whatever you think is a relevant way to keep us posted.
Okay, will do.
All right, I think we can we can move on to the next piece of the update.
Tim, you want to take over?
Sure. Good afternoon. Tim Weir, Director of the Office of Public Integrity. I'm here with Cara Makely. She's a principal auditor here with OPI and has over 25 years of audit experience in the city. So a wealth of knowledge and a good resource for myself and other people on the team. I do have the PowerPoint if I can have the authority to share that. I've made a note, never follow PMO in a PowerPoint, because this is going to be less colorful. Okay, here are the topics. I put this together. I wasn't exactly sure how much information you wanted. I can certainly go into more detail in almost any of these areas, either today or another time. But hopefully give you kind of broader perspective of the different types of things that OPI is involved in, where our resources are pointed at this point. So we we the services, we're talking about services provided, budget, the audits. I'll talk a little bit about risk assessment and the process that we utilize here to put that together. Administrative investigations, we provide some support to the Board of Ethics and also through training new and current employees with respect to the city's ethics code. So I'll talk a little bit about that. Our accreditation, peer review, I think it's important to for you have some information about the process we go through with that. And then Cara is currently going through the 10-week City Supervisory Leadership School. And as part of that, she's asked to put together a project focused on improving a weakness within our department. So, you know, we got together and she selected a project, and she'll, at the end of the presentation, she'll speak to that as well. So the services we provide, basically internal audits of city departments. We conduct a risk assessment, usually annually, if not every two years. Administrative investigations, ethics training, as I said before, and Board of Ethics support. On the staffing side, we're a small office, as you well know. We have seven employees, including myself, executive assistant, three full-time auditors. We have another position, fairly new position, I think I created it a couple of years ago with the title Senior Field Auditor Investigations, and it's really a mix of the two skill sets. Obviously, audits are a little bit more predictable, and we can plan those. On the investigation side, it really is, it can be very unpredictable. So as investigations ever flow, you know, that particular position can move in and out and support audit projects or other OPI initiatives. And we have a part-time integrity compliance officer that basically is a more of an older title, but this this individual conducts investigations. Our budget, 661,300, predominantly salary-driven, with I think our largest expense being our rent here at OPI in Buckingham Commons. So. Okay, just to work through our audit process, I think it's good to know the different steps that we take. Real quickly, we first notify a particular department, either via email or a meeting, and provide them some idea of what we're going to audit, the scope of the audit, what are audit objectives are, and answer any questions. We then move to more of a survey or background on the particular department to better understand the process that we're going to look at. If it's a if it's a new audit that we've never done before, we'll actually develop an audit program. If it's an existing audit that's been conducted in prior years, we'll usually use the, maybe tweak the the older audit program. And that's basically giving us the procedures and the steps that we're going to take. We'll have an interest conference, if necessary, to explain what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, answer any questions. And then the most time-consuming part of the audit traditionally would be the field work, actually reviewing the documents, doing the testing, and taking the samples of what we want to look at. We then put together a draft report, provide that to the the department head and the personnel that we were coordinating with on the on the department side, and have them review it, have a discussion about our findings, our recommendation, our reasoning. Give them the opportunity to talk to speak to us about maybe things that we need to clarify or better understand. And we have an exit conference to finalize the wording of the report and what findings that we're going to issue, if any. And the the department head actually creates a response memo to our findings, provides it to to OPI. I include it in the final report. And the final report is then issued out to the mayor and other members of the administration. We do a six-month follow-up. Really, that's conducted two different ways. There are times where we'll actually go out and conduct a maybe a smaller audit of the corrective actions. There are other times where we'll send a memo to the department head, basically asking them to certify that those corrections have been made, and if not, maybe explain to us why. Our KPIs, you're pretty familiar with this, which you'll see in the budget book. I've updated it to reflect the end of the fiscal year. But, you know, audits completed, audit findings, recommendations, our training sessions we provide. We, a few years ago, we added a few more, one audit recommendations implemented, which is basically a measure of, you know, what the departments have adopted and how they've accepted our recommendations. And I think that's a metric closely related to quality. Our customer customer satisfaction survey we send out after every audit. I think there's nine elements that the auditors are scored on, and we, you know, seek to get a four or higher there. Investigation's completed, and there are times subsequent to an investigation, there may be findings or recommendations that we issue regarding those reports. And just to give you an idea of what we, this is a list of the audits we've completed and related projects for the past fiscal year, and then what we have kind of on our plate, a few of them near the the bottom there, we're going to finish up the end of August. And we're prepping for our risk assessment and working with Fried Maxick as part of our support to their audit, which is part of our contract. And finishing up the branch library cash handle audit. And this is to give you an idea of our fiscal year plan and what that looks like. This does change as we move through the year, depending on the requests that we get from the administration or possibly city council, or other issues may arise where we'll point our resources and conduct other audits. We try to hit some of the higher-risk departments, you know, finance, police, DES, all in the high-risk category based on our risk assessment. The projected hours are an estimate and usually tied to the the hours that we've spent in similar audits in the past. And just a note on our risk assessment, you know, we we send a survey out to all the different departments and subunits. We meet with members of the department. We review and analyze the survey responses, basically asking them what risks they they feel are important for us to consider, what areas they think we should point our audit resources to. And eventually, we'll use a methodology that we adopted with the help of the local CPA firm here a few years ago. And we'll put a number to that risk and prepare a risk assessment report and a heat map. And just so you have an idea of the risks that we consider, here they are, external market reputation, you know, the risk of improper interactions with internal and external customers, financial risk, operational risk, compliance, legal regulatory risk. As you can see, these will change depending on what department you are in, and these are really inherent risks. So if you're sitting in IT and you're considered high-risk based on your risk assessment, it's it's, you know, not anything anybody has done wrong. It's basically inherent in the position that you have in the department that you're in. So strategic risk, whether or not we're actually going to be able to accomplish the strategies and your objectives. Technology and systems, you know, are they adequate? People and culture, you know, we have the right people in the right places with the right training, the right skill sets, and and obviously fraud risk and how vulnerable are certain areas of the city and their departments, how vulnerable they are to the risk of fraud. So, and I certainly speak to that in more detail if anybody has an interest. Like I say, we, it's a little bit of an art and a little bit of a science, but it does create a roadmap for us so that we can create a plan that's based on risk rather than just kind of randomly picking, you know, departments to audit. On the administrative investigative side, just a few points. Traditionally, we average 25 to 35 investigations a year. They range from very quick investigations to more extended, depending on what the allegations are. They are limited to the employee's scope of employment. Just some somewhat common violations that were allegations of violations that we do see, conflicts of interest, misuse of city resources, nepotism, favoritism. That's just a few. In the end, OPI will look at the facts and make a a call on whether we think the allegations are sustained, unfounded, not provable, or we should refer the matter to another department. And oftentimes, if it's an extensive investigation, we'll prepare an official report and send that to the mayor and the administration. And oftentimes, we will make recommendations in those reports regarding corrective actions. And just a quick note on the peer review. It's conducted by CPA firm every three years. What does this really do? It allows us to ensure that we as auditors and our auditing work are is conducted in accordance with both the Yellow Book, generally accepted government auditing standards, and what they call the Red Book, which is international standards for the professional practice of internal auditing. So those are the two main sets of standards that government and corporations adhere to. And our last peer review report was issued June of 2021. And that's posted on our website as well. And now I'll turn it over to Cara to just say a few words about her project.
Good afternoon, Council, Deputy Mayor. I have attended the Lead on Leadership Skills facilitated by the Jackman Group. And in that, we were asked to develop an action plan that was specific. And using the SMART model, I came up with the objective to review and streamline the existing audit process to gain greater efficiency within OPI, provide quality customer service internally and externally. So it's measurable, it's attainable. We were asked to create a time-bound list of our action steps. And can you go back up to the strategy? I'm sorry. Should be the slide before that one. I can speak to it. It's not there. So our strategy has to be what was impactful in our training, and we were, I've decided to use process mapping and a business management tool called CPAC to look at from the supplier all the way to the customer, who are sometimes one in the same, looking at the input and the output. And not just the process, we look at total audit hours, but we'd like to map it out and try to break those hours down into each of our steps in our audit process and determine where the bottlenecks are and try to find out with each other, communicate more of our process and how each of us may be doing things a little differently. Provide feedback to one another and what we did well, what we, you know, can improve on, how we would do things differently. So I'm going to start by meeting with the team. Currently, we're two and a half auditors, but we do have full-time auditor coming at the end of August. So this being time-bound is going to extend beyond her start date to include her with maybe some new ideas, new resources. So we will discuss the current process and then using the mapping methods and concepts, identify possible improvements, opportunities for change, and then list, try to create a list of internal process metrics in addition to what we gauge now. And again, looking for strengths and further areas of opportunity. And over a three-month period, try to calculate those metrics, each of us during our And over a three-month period, try to calculate those metrics each of us during our audit workflow. Determining that they're effective, that there's added value. Um, and then getting together again as a group and discussing what was successful, whether we can do more. And then ongoing, um, getting early next year, periodically evaluate those metrics and goals to further develop our office and see how we can continuously improve.
And I'll just add that I think that project will be helpful and that it will establish some extra internal metrics. Um, where we can identify any kind of bottlenecks there within our audit process, right? So we can move through these. I know at the end of the year, we're always measured by, uh, in part by the number that we do. And uh, and certainly want to move through those as quickly as we can. So I think this uh, project uh, will be helpful. And uh, that's it, and answer any questions?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll start off with a question and I'll open it up to my colleagues. So with respect to investigations, um, internal investigations. Are the parties notified that there is an investigation ongoing? Is, or they notify, at what point in the process would, would someone be notified if there's an internal investigation going on? If at all?
Yeah, they, they may not be until the, the investigation is completed. And normally the, the, the results are forwarded to the mayor, the deputy mayor, corporation counsel and the department head. So you know, at that point, it would be probably the responsibility of the department head to have that discussion. Now, there may be times uh, during the investigation where, you know, we need records and we need to talk to people. Right? And we may, uh, when, we may want to talk to that individual if they're willing to talk to us. So you, you have to remember all, um, all of our interviews are voluntary. So in that respect, they obviously uh, be aware of an investigation. So uh, I, I guess the answer would be it depends.
Okay, very good. All right, so uh, council colleagues, any questions?
Just one, um, what, what, and I'm sorry if you mentioned this, Tim, but what, what specifically prompts the beginning of an OPI investigation? Is that just all the uh, discretion of the mayor or is there other, other, other things that prompt it?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. I mean, the complaints uh, come in uh, many different ways. So either by person or through our anonymous tip line or hotline, uh, email, walk-in. Uh, so all of those would generate uh, for the most part, an intake. And if we do some work on it, uh, you know, the first question that I ask is, um, you know, do, is this something that I have jurisdiction over? Does the allegation involve, you know, the city, uh, the employees, the scope of employment, um, city resources? Any part of the city's ethics code or some city policy or procedure? Um, I really looked at jurisdiction first, right? And if I'm unsure, I have a discussion with the law department for some kind of clarification. And from that point on, um, you know, we moved through the investigation to determine whether or not that identified code provision was or was not violated. Um, now, so, so, you know, an investigation is somewhat of a loaded term, right? There was the term investigation. Um, oftentimes it, it, it may be research on our part and then we determine, oh, we don't have jurisdiction in this. And it's referred out to, you know, whoever we think uh, we should refer it to. Um, in that respect, that would count in our investigation numbers because we'd have an intake number and we did perform some work on it, right? So that's uh, kind of on the low end of things. Uh, on, on the more extensive end of things is when we, we need to review uh, months of records. Um, interview ten, fifteen different people, um, and research the code and policies and procedures to determine whether or not uh, there, there is uh, an allegation and oftentimes there might be several. So we have to work through that same process for every allegation that the complainant has given us.
Okay, thank you.
Any final questions? Hearing none, I think that uh, that concludes our, our business for this work session. Any, any final words, uh, Deputy Mayor?
Not at all, I'm glad we were able to get it all done in an hour, so.
Yes, thanks everyone, thanks for being efficient and we appreciate all of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.